I had only special meeting of the planning commission, but the last meeting for the calendar year. So, welcome. We will get underway momentarily with the applications under consideration for this evening in our public hearings. Before we do that, however, we will take action on the minutes of our previous meeting earlier this month on the 2nd of December. Commission members have received draft minutes in advance of this evening, and if there is a motion for action on those minutes of December the 2nd, we can entertain that now.
Yes, I approve a motion for approval of the minutes with one suggested correction. The correction is on page nine in the discussion of the Syracuse Development Center Master Plan. The heading for that and also the first sentence that reads the applicant introduced the project, they are proposing a master plan. References to a master plan should actually say sketch plan, both in the title and in the discussion.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I move to second of the approval as amended.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of that motion for the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Our minutes are approved for December the 2nd. And we will move into our old business first. Just a note before we begin, as we get into public hearings, if you are unfamiliar with our process, just want to indicate that the way we proceed is as each application is announced and introduced by a member of the staff, we ask that the applicant or their representative come to the podium in the center of the room, provide your name and address for the record, and then a brief summary of the application involved. Following any questions from the commission members, we will then afford an opportunity to members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the application to do that. And similarly, we will invite members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to the application to come forward to do that. In either case, we ask that you simply state your name and address for the record, speaking into the microphone, and then a brief summary of your comments either way on the application, holding those, if you would, please, to two to three minutes. Where comments are offered in opposition, we will afford the applicant an opportunity to address the comments made in opposition. So with that, I think we are ready to begin. Any changes to the agenda? Okay.
I just want to say thank you for a great year, y'all, to the board, and thank you for taking this meeting on short notice. The first order of business is a re-subdivision R-2467 at 180 Intrepid Lane and 182 Intrepid Lane. Owner, applicant, Hagan Real Estate Associates LLC and James Hagan Real Estate Company LLC. It's located in the commercial zone district.
The applicant is here. You were here last time, as I recall. Our apologies for making you come back.
I appreciate being number one. Thank you. My name is Jim Hagan. Address 180 Intrepid Lane. I own both 180 and 182 Intrepid Lane. When I bought the property, it was one large lot, and back in 1998, I built my building at 180. In 2011, I had an opportunity to build a second building on the property, so I applied for and obtained a subdivision, so I created 180 and 182. I continue to own both properties. When I subdivided it, I specifically annexed or left a portion of the rear of the property. If I could just point to this face.
Right now, 180 has furniture on Intrepid, this triangle-shaped property, and this parcel back here. 182 is the remainder of the property. This area was being used for the stormwater management system that was used to serve 182. At the time, my tenants were going to rent the 182, we're talking about maybe buying the building. So for that reason, I purposely wanted to maintain control of the stormwater system. And that's worked fine. I'm now in a position where I have a contract to sell my building, and I will retain ownership of 182. For that reason, what I want to do is transfer the ownership of the stormwater management system so it's contiguous to 182. That's essentially it. It's relatively simple outline adjustment. I'd be glad if I didn't answer any questions.
Thank you for that summary. Commission members, any questions for the applicant?
All set.
All set, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Provide your name, address, and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. I don't see anyone rising to speak in either case, so we will close public comment and proceed to our seeker review.
Has everybody had a chance to review the short EAF Part 1 that's contained in your packet?
Yes.
Is everyone familiar with the 11 questions of the short EAF Part 2 also contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe this project will have any moderate to large impacts under seeker?
No.
Because you do not believe there will be any moderate to large impacts, I recommend you vote to issue a negative declaration under seeker and complete the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
I move to make a negative seeker declaration.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the seeker motion before us. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker resolution is adopted, and we may now proceed to action on the re-subdivision. This is R-2467. Is there such, any motion on this?
I move to approve R-2467 as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? R-2467 is approved. Thank you, and again, apologies for making it necessary to return tonight.
I understand how it's got to work. Thank you.
Thank you. You as well.
Next item on old business is Bright Muse Mini Storage Special Use Permit, SP-2415, and Major Site Plan Review, MASPR-2428. I believe last meeting you did close the public comment period, but we invite the applicants to come up to the podium and give a couple minutes update on some of the changes.
Thank you. I'm Brad Hunt from McKenzie Hughes. I'm the lawyer for the applicant benchmark development. I know that you're familiar with the project and have seen these plans before, so I don't intend to revisit that. A brief update, the plans that are submitted now for your consideration have no work at all in the easement area that the neighbor Greenwich Manor Apartments has an easement over. And that came about, we attempted to reach an agreement with, finalize an agreement with the neighbor, and we're unable to do so. And I, it's not my intention to get into the weeds of that unless you want me to. I know there, you've probably seen some letters that went back and forth.
We don't need weeds tonight.
But no weeds. So the bottom line is, the plans do not impact the easement area. And we would respectfully submit, and I believe that the Corporation Counsel's Office would agree with this, that, you know, it's a, the fact that we were not able to reach an agreement with the neighbor is not a, not a, you know, proper consideration in voting on the site plan. And the, you know, the bottom line is, this is a permitted use. We need no, require no variances. My understanding is that the city zoning staff and engineering staff have no objection to the plans. And the one other issue I would comment on is that you may have seen letters, also going back and forth between the lawyers about, you know, possible issues that could arise in construction, that could affect the neighboring property. I would just say this, there's a disagreement between the parties. It's a civil disagreement. That's not a site plan matter. And we do not expect there to be any issues in the construction process, and that's based on our consultation with, you know, construction professionals. If issues surprisingly did arise, you know, the law provides a way to address that. And if you want me to discuss New York law governing, you know, work on your own property that touches the roots of trees on your neighbor's property, again, I'd be happy to do that, but I'm not planning to unless you want me to. And I, there's a, you know, that would, if that issue came up, which we don't expect, that would be a separate matter. So that's the bottom line, is we're now asking you to rule and hopefully approve these plans that do not impact the easement area. And I think you're familiar with the plans. If you have questions, our landscape architect is present to answer them. But other than that, that's, I would rest our case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just ask staff and legal counsel just to confirm that the plans as submitted reflect what the attorney just outlined for us.
I had conversations with Mr. Hunt, I think, I can't remember, last week and this and this week, and directed staff to confirm with engineering that they absolutely did not see any encroachments. Water and roots are a private trespass matter, which doesn't affect your deliberations. And Jitong of our team, who also happens to be an engineer, also re-reviewed the plans to make sure that there was absolutely no encroachment into the exclusive easement area. Anything to add, Christian?
Nothing to add.
I was just wondering, the landscape architect, just for the application people in here. For us, because it's not always easy to read the drawings, just show us where the end of the new construction is and how it doesn't impact the easement, so everybody can see it.
Sure. So in previously submitted plans, I want to say two months ago, we had submitted drawings that showed curb line being installed on our property side of the easement. That curb line is one foot off the property, of the easement line, which for all intents and purposes is sort of a property line. But that dashed line, if you zoom in there, I can go point to it if you'd like, but that dashed line there is the easement, which contains that zigzaggy line, which represents the edge of the Greenwich Manor parking bounds. So that dashed line there, yes, that, that's the easement line. On the other side, northbound, that is the curb line with a storm structure in there and improvements that represent the Brighton Hill project that we're looking for approval on today. Anything, any other questions in particular?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions from the commission members for the applicant? If not, as I recall, we have completed seeker determination on this.
October.
A while ago.
We just have a vote on back months ago. We pulled it back because of the encroachments into the easement, which were on the plans. And so this is you voting on the new site plan. So you do need to vote on the site plan. However, we did do seeker for the project, and you will vote on the SUP tonight, which you have not voted on before. I don't.
May I speak?
Public comment was closed already. How about 90 seconds update?
Okay. I submitted an opinion of a forester that says they can't install the curb without destroying trees on the easement area. Mr. Hunt continuously makes a misrepresentation. Two, we agreed. We agreed until Mr. Hunt, because they don't want to agree to anything, decided that we don't agree. We fully agreed with the first two, with the first, the language about assignment in the first two drafts Mr. Hunt sent. He decided to throw something in so he could come and misrepresent to the commission that we didn't agree. We agreed on the plan at a zoning meeting to just do the curve and paving of the easement area. Again, the, we were sent plans with additional drainage structures while different plans were sent to the committee. We've been lied to, the committee's been lied to over and over again. The common council sent this back pending an agreement among the parties, which they have decided, although they did agree, to all of a sudden not agree. So I think it's inappropriate for the commission to refer this back to the common council advising that the special permit should be issued. Special permit should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. So, as you had recapped earlier, our seeker action has been completed. We still need to act upon the special use permit for a recommendation to the council, and the new site plan review also needs action. And...
I just want to correct the record, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The special use permit came back from council originally because council wanted a traffic study for the area, was it not? Or it didn't come back? I don't think it's ever made it to council.
I don't think we voted on the special use.
You didn't vote on the special use permit. Okay, yeah. So it did not come back.
Okay. So we do need to do, take a vote on that, as well as the site plan review. And I'm just confirming what I think I just heard moments ago, that the city engineering office has signed off on the latest site plan.
Yes.
Received by your office.
Yep.
Okay. And if we could add to that narrative, that the attorneys for the applicant also retained engineer who examined the work planes and asserted that there was no disruption of the easement area as a result to the plan. So it's not just the city engineers who have attested to that. All right. Any other immediate questions? Or if not, is there a motion first on the special use permit, which is SP-2415? So this is a recommendation to the council.
Question, Mr. Chair, are we doing the special use permit first or the master site plan, or review? Major site plan review?
I don't know that it matters.
Does it matter?
I was just taking them up in order here. So special use permit is first on the agenda for these two.
And I make a motion to approve SP-2415 as presented with two conditions. One condition beyond the general conditions for a special use permit and for a major site plan review. One condition is with respect to the landscaping buffer between the applicant's property and the Greenwich Manor. The other special condition is our friend, the Indian bat. There's to be no removal of the trees from November to March because of the potential impact on that endangered species.
Second.
Thank you both. And I think those conditions were reflected in the county planning board's correspondence, if I'm not mistaken.
And the motion is a recommendation to the common council for approval.
Thank you. Discussion on that motion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? So SP-2415 goes forward as a recommendation to the council. Next is the major site plan review, which is MASPR-2428. Is there, excuse me. Yes, 2428. Is there a motion on that site plan review?
Approval of MASPR-2428 as presented with the same two conditions that were applied to the special use permit, one, the Indian bat situation, and the landscaping buffer between the applicant's property and Greenwich Manor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion on the motion before us for the site plan review. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? So the major site plan review is approved for MASPR-2428. We move over now into new business.
All right. The first item on new business is special use permit, SP-2429 at 2430 to 50 James Street and Forest Hill Drive. Owner is 93 NYRPT LLC, and the applicant is, forgive me if I say this wrong, Muammar Ali, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's in the MX2 Zone District.
If the applicant is here, please come to the podium.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
We're trying to add...
If you just give your name and address and then describe the project, please.
My name is Muammar Ali Ayah, 2450, I'm sorry, 2430-50 James Street. And the project is, that building was banded for five years, and we put it back to life. 7-Eleven used to do business there. And we try and just increase the business to install a kitchen, add a hood to that deli. That's about it.
So you want to add food that you will be cooking?
Yeah, we try to cook. We try to install a kitchen to, we were able to cook inside the place.
What hours do you plan to operate?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
What hours will you be open for business?
The hours is eight, 7 o'clock until 12 o'clock in laytime. But the kitchen will be different hours, definitely. We do, we do the other, it's a convenience, it's a convenience store.
Right.
We do beer, tobacco, and snacks, and beverage. Since there is a lot of competition in the street, we try and add the kitchen to, you know. Our rent is a lot. We take the building trouble net, which is we pay taxes, insurance. I mean, we try and just increase the income to be able to cover everything.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
If you add the kitchen, do you know how many more people will work there?
At least four or five people will be in the kitchen.
So they'll, and they'll be there. Each, each shift, you'll need those four people?
Each shift will be about between two, three people for each shift.
More than what you already have for the convenience store?
Will be more than what we have people right now.
Any idea, because you said the hours will be different, any idea?
When I said the hours will be different, the kitchen will open around 10 o'clock until late 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM.
So 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
Yeah. That's for the kitchen part. But the convenience will stay in the same hours, the usual hours.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
There's a comment in the package about the circulation pattern for the parking lot. Since you have a curb cut in the entrance on both James Street and Forest Street, the suggestion was that you make one of those an entrance and one of those an exit in order to make the traffic situation less complicated and avoid potential problems. I'm unsure if you're aware of that, if you had considered that, if you had any thought to that as incorporating into your plan.
I have my artist with me today.
Hi, my name is Min. I haven't heard that comment before, but I think it would be okay to do that.
Okay. So you would, we would be okay with us making that as a condition for the application?
We probably, I have to discuss with him before we can make that recommendation.
Okay.
Do you own the building?
No.
No. You rent the building.
That company called Benderson.
Yeah.
9D3 NYPT LLC, they own the...
And you've been operating about two years? Is that right?
I've been there for two years, exactly.
Two years, yeah. Okay. Just want to make sure I have the right... Just want to make sure I have the right dates. Okay.
Yep.
The, there is some discussion in the application and the factors and comments, that there are improvements that would need to be made on the sidewalks. There is, I think, asphalt on the Forest Hill Drive side that will have to be replaced with concrete, traditional sidewalks. I think we do five-foot blocks now, don't we? Are they five foot wide?
Roughly.
Whatever the standard is. As well as some landscaping, the dumpster, the new dumpster enclosure. I guess my question is, are you aware of all of these potential improvements?
I'm aware of that, all the improvement that's shown on that site plan.
Okay.
But previously, I saw the dumpster on the site plan that provided by future architect.
Okay, great. And I think, did we get a comment about the back? The backyards, the abutting backyard here?
Greening.
Or no? Might, do I have it confused with something else, maybe? Okay. I'll go, I'll find it. You guys go ahead.
Are there other questions for the applicant?
Just want, well, when I go to call it.
I just want... So, I think there's a comment that you will, that we will soon introduce to the record. But the question is, in the back of the property, where it butts up to other, to neighbors, the grounds behind it are apparently, and I didn't have time to go up there tonight, very overgrown. So, the recommendation might be to trim that and make that more in keeping with Forest Hill Drive neighbors' properties. Okay. Okay. That's it for me.
Including, including snow removal, apparently.
Right.
Not that we've had much this year, but you never know.
It's not even Christmas yet, come on.
Questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? So, please come to the podium, give us your name and address, and then your comments, please.
My name is Aviz Alran. I know what, I'm from Syracuse. I know the location, when it used to be 7-Eleven. It's my buddy Mohammed took over about a couple of years ago. He did a lot of improvement there, got a lot of money there. He make it nice and neatable, you know, it's better than 7-Eleven. I go there once a week, once every two weeks, once every three weeks, for business, as a friend, as a business, and a consumer. I could see how he did that, very nice and neat. And for you guys to approve the special permit, to put the hood there, that's going to increase his business, because he got about three, four, five people working there, he can increase the payroll, and increase the atmosphere in the neighborhood. And a lot of people there in the morning, special people working, the city stop down there for coffee and for breakfast, and they're going to increase the value of the business, especially what he paying for rent and taxes and insurance for their property. He made that property looks nice and neat. I don't know if you guys passing by on James Street, it's visible, next to the mobile gas station. For me, I will recommend you guys approve his permit, and it's good for the city, it's good for his business, it's good for the community, it's good for the traffic, it's good for everybody in the city. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application?
How you doing? My name is Tyler Griffin. They called me, I didn't know these guys for a while. I grew up in the, like, the restaurant business, so I know a lot about health inspections. So, you know, they brought me up just to, you know, help them out, and, you know, like, make sure, you know, stuff, you know, because they got a lot of stuff going on. So, I really have much to say, but I'm just here to help them out, and, you know, I grew up in a restaurant business, so I'm here to help them out. And, you know, I mean, I know a lot about the restaurant business, you know, temps and, you know, stuff like health inspectors look for, you know, and some people want to go to get a nice, you know, meal, and they don't want to go far, you know what I mean? Like, you know, with the economy and stuff, so, but that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other individuals to speak in favor?
Hi, I'm Carissa Hunter. I live at 1321 Butternut Street. I just want to say that I've lived, I lived in that area my, almost my entire life, from Bristol Myers to Buttons. And I know that, that them having the food there, it would be a plus, because there's so many desert, food deserts around Syracuse. Any place that has food, it would be a welcome to the community. I just know it. You know, the food banks and stuff, they're having trouble. Everybody needs food. So, it would be, it would just help the people that live across the street. There's apartments all over there, you know, instead of walking all the way to Shop City, they can come across the street. It's just convenient, it's right there. I used to walk up to the Huntington Pool as a kid. We used to stop and get food there. It wasn't that then, but that place is just, like, iconic, and everybody knows it's there, you know what I mean? So, it's like, that's a perfect spot. It always has been, you know, so, but anyway, thanks.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward, give us your name and address and your comments, please.
Good evening, my name is Maris Gilbert. My address is 1321 Butternut Street. Yeah, see, would really be a benefit to have it there, it's for the community, you know, we trying to do things that I think that would open up a job for me, it's, you know, low maintenance, you know, as far as what else I have. I think it would also be, I'm saying, very good for those who are low income, you know what I'm saying? The food would be low income, we can afford it, because food is high today. I just, it'd be good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments. I don't see any other speakers rising. We can close public comment on this application and turn to our SIKR review.
Has everyone had a chance to review the short EAF Part 1 contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone reviewed the short EAF Part 2 that's contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe this project will have any moderate to large impacts under SIKR?
No.
Because you do not believe there will be any moderate to large impacts, I recommend you vote to issue a negative declaration under SIKR and complete the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a SIKR motion to that effect?
I move to issue a negative SIKR declaration.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion on the SIKR motion before us for the special use permit? There's no discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? SIKR resolution is approved. We can turn our attention now to a recommendation to the council for the special use permit itself.
I move to approve SP-24-29 with a recommendation for affirmative action by the common council. And I also would like to add that in addition to general conditions for a special use permit, that there are 11 conditions listed on page 73 of the packet that should be applied to the motion. And parenthetically, I would note, not as an additional condition, but for the applicant's, that on page 73 in the staff analysis, the last paragraph of the staff analysis refers to the circulation pattern. And so, I won't, unless my colleagues want to make, make that a condition, but just refer to that and consider seriously the circulation pattern of an in and out, rather than both entrances and exits being used both ways, because it would significantly increase safety in that area.
Second?
Thank you both. Discussion on this motion. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That will now go to the common council for final action. And we turn to another special permit application.
Next on the agenda is a special permit, 2430, at 623 to 25 Wolf Street, 2nd North Street. Property owner and applicant Gregory Nyes of East Coast Housing LLC. It's in the MX2 Zone District, and it's for a restaurant, to be known as Tommy's Diner.
Tommy.
Good afternoon. My name is Gregory Nyes, representing 623, 625 Wolf Street. The portion 625 Wolf Street, the commercial space has been a restaurant bar for approximately 30-plus years. We're part of the new zoning district, I suppose, rezoning the property to a restaurant, which has already been a restaurant prior.
Okay. Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
What kind of restaurant?
It's going to be a diner.
And the hours?
Hours are going to be, I believe you said, don't quote me on this, I believe you said it's going to be 6:00 in the morning to approximately 6:00 at night.
We have 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay, that's what it was, okay. Five, sorry about that. My apologies.
So, we want, we want five to seven?
Five, five to seven. My apologies.
Okay. So, I believe this location was previously a bar with some difficult...
Correct.
Challenges?
If you'd like to discuss, yes, there were some challenges that were easier said than done to just stop. There was a lot of issues outside, and it was very, the security inside could not police the outside, just legally not right. The owner, Tommy Merzullo, he decided to turn in the liquor license because things got out of control, and there was nothing we could do further, as building owner, there's nothing I could do, besides shut him down. He went on his own to submit the liquor license to shut down. That ceased the problem real quick. So, the, all the issues were outside, though, and it just, he couldn't police the outside. And we voluntarily, with some of my suggestions, say, hey, enough's enough, also with Marty Nave over here, working with him, the best idea was to shut the restaurant down, let it breathe, come up with a new concept, and the concept is a diner.
Okay. And you're going to remain the owner of the building, obviously?
Correct.
And will the operator of the diner be the same operator of, that was the operator of the bar?
Different manager.
Different manager.
Correct. That's, was the problem.
Okay.
I don't want to throw anyone under the bus, so, right.
And there's no alcohol going to be served?
There's going to be no alcohol served right now. Nope, no, nothing's going to be applied for.
Right.
We discussed earlier, just a little bit ago, if it's going to be a diner, if someday Tommy does not do business there anymore, it could happen, and I get a new tenant, they could open as a restaurant and apply for the proper licenses to serve alcohol, if that's what they want to do.
Yep.
But for now, no.
Right.
Problem solved.
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner, I'm assuming?
Breakfast and lunch.
Okay.
For, maybe a dinner, but lunch, same food.
Yep.
Early dinner.
Early dinner.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that'll be it.
When was the bar and grill shut down?
I'm sorry?
When was the bar and grill shut?
Approximately, almost exactly three months ago.
Okay.
Yeah, about three months ago. And that issue did get out of hand, as we all know, and it was a very difficult thing to just stop, because the people were just coming and staying outside, and it was a difficult situation that no one wanted.
Question for staff. Our report includes a series of recommendations, environmental design recommendations for crime prevention. This is a relatively new approach by the city. We've had it in a couple of cases before, and it embraces a numbers, puts forth a number of recommendations that would perhaps be conditions for the, any recommended approval. Have those recommendations from the environmental design entity been shared with the applicant?
If not, but I think we can discuss those with the property owner here today.
Yeah, maybe a quick review of what's involved, maybe...
It's in the packet that the applicant didn't get that.
The SEPTED report?
Yeah.
Has the applicant seen it?
No.
No? Okay.
You should probably...
Have most of these been addressed? I know the lighting has been addressed by staff as a condition.
Right.
Right? So, I guess the question...
Could someone first, just for context, someone frame the environmental design process and why that's here?
Right.
And then, we could maybe talk about some of the specific recommendations for this application.
Certainly. So, the SEPTED is crime prevention through environmental design, and a special, SPD specialist went and assessed the property for, to see what could be done to improve the safety and security of the site, given that they're, you know, in somewhat of a rougher area.
Explain a little bit more clearer.
Yeah.
Okay, but this is, we're talking now...
Like, some things are like access control, right? And access control, like, how, it's Wolf Street and...
2nd North Street.
7th, 2nd North.
2nd North, right.
7th North. So, like, on that street, there's no really clear delineation on where you can pull in and pull out. It seems like there's parking spots where cars can back out into the right-of-way, and in order to prevent that, put bollards up or have a clear way of entering or exiting into the property, so, so as to minimize, like, vehicular incidences and secure the parking lot a little more.
Sure. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
We're saying a couple of different things here. We're talking about security, and then we're talking about the right-of-way, per se, of a vehicle leaving the parking lot or entering the parking lot. Just so we're clear, are we talking about standard right-of-ways? Or explain a little bit more, because the right-of-way is a common law, that when you drive a car, you have the right-of-way. If you're driving straight, someone has the right-of-way. So, I'm a little confused of what you're explaining.
Well, I was just giving you an example, and we can talk further.
Sure.
Not tonight, but...
I believe most of the recommendations by SEPTED have been included in the staff review and the recommended conditions in the application that we have tonight. So, the SEPTED recommendations are here, and I know they just gave you that.
Sure.
They are primarily, as it says, crime prevention, and they're focused on lighting. There is an indication, for instance, that the property's under surveillance. They identified one camera. They may make a suggestion that you have more than one, if you think you need it. That type of recommendation, it's crime prevention for the neighborhood.
Sure.
And for your property.
So, to address the lighting, at least, while I'm here, at one point in time, there was an issue where the police said, we need more lighting, the lighting went up real fast. So, by a trained electrician, and that got addressed in the parking lot, because we let the parking lot rate up. The front has lighting, then there's also, I believe, a street light. We did put the proper lighting in, according to codes and everything. We did what they said. We put up the signs for crime prevention, private property, so on, so forth. The, I'm going to have to review this, obviously, I'm not going to read it now, because it might take a little too much time. But some of the stuff we did address already.
So, I think, as I said, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read it, but I think most of what SEPTED is recommending is in our recommendations as part of this process tonight.
Sure.
There are some obvious things that you wouldn't get a permit anyway. For instance, all the windows are covered in the front, which doesn't work for a public building, so...
Besides one, there is one open. The other ones are decals that you could see out of.
Right.
The decals are of eggs, they're food, basically. And that's just, and one of the windows is open, there's only three windows in the front.
So, those types of issues will have to get worked out between Christian and you.
Right. Is your contact information available? If you have a business card, that'd be great. I'll contact you tomorrow.
Are there questions for the... Are there questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I guess I have just a general question here about the SEPTED and how that fits into this, because this is the second application in which we've gotten this particular tool as part of the application. Both cases are instances where the, there was a special use permit that had a history of violations and a lot of crime in the area, and that's why the environmental study was done to address the crime issue. I'm not quite sure why the applicant doesn't get that prior to the hearing, because if we're gonna vote on things related to that, it seems to me that the applicant should have that information ahead of time, unless there's some legal or procedural reason why that can't happen.
No, there's not. And we'll note it and get better with that, communicating those recommendations to the applicant and/or property owner.
Was it a matter of the filing?
Pardon?
When the police department actually filed it? I think we're, sometimes we're, you know, our timing of when our meetings are held don't always work out with when the police file the documents. So we end up, the night of the hearing, we end up looking at it just like you do for the first time.
Well, yeah, I would have had this all done.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, but we are all in the same boat.
Sure.
We're looking at something new.
Totally agree, totally agree.
And it's particularly sensitive case, because as you know, we have the hearing just before this meeting for the revocation of the previous special use permit.
Sure.
The way we deal with that situation is the special use permit has conditions, because then if those conditions are violated, then the special use permit can be revoked.
Understood.
So it seems to me it's fairly important that you're aware of the environmental report and all the issues that may be in there, special conditions.
Sure. Understood.
Yes.
Not at this point, I guess. No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward, provide your name, address, comments?
Counselor Marty Nave. If you were at a meeting earlier, the issues still stick out. You wanna be open till 7:00 PM, but you know the Wolf's Den is open at 5:00. There is going to be a conflict of parking spots. And I'm, there will be. And I'm afraid it's gonna happen again. Now, my understanding was, now, correct me if I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is what, it was gonna be a diner, maybe early lunch, done by 2:30 to 3:00. I did not, and correct me if I'm wrong, I did not, we never had a discussion about evening hours. So that, there is a problem there. You're gonna have a conflict with parking, again, both vehicles park on the street. I would suggest that you speak with the owners of the Wolf's Den, okay? They may not have a problem with it, I don't know, but I would strongly suggest to speak to Peter McGinnis about this, because we're gonna, I'm afraid we're gonna have the same conflict again. It's great in the morning, in the afternoon, but come around 5:00 o'clock when people are at 7:00, and now cars will be parked, and you're gonna have to find another place to park, though. Okay? So this has, this has to be addressed, though, okay, of this understanding. Another point that goes back, you did volunteer, you no longer have a liquor license, and it's our assumption that you will not be selling any liquor, right? There'll be no liquor sold, right?
There's no liquor license. There's no liquor.
Well, I wanted there, I wanted, no, right?
And let's discuss parking real quick.
Okay.
We have a parking lot.
Mr. Chairman, should we have the cross debate?
Excuse us just a second, gents.
They have a parking lot. The street parking.
Let the counselor speak, and then, and anyone else who wants to speak in opposition, then we're gonna...
We're gonna return to you to address the comments. So if you continue.
I wanna clarify, I'm not speaking in opposition. I'm not speaking in opposition. I'm offering my comments.
I think there's questions that have been addressed, though, and I'm sure that they will be addressed through Corporation Council and through codes. But I just wanted to, you know, bring that out now, so that before we open a diner, that we've crossed all our keys and just make sure there's no further misunderstanding. But I think you should also check with the other area businesses, okay? That's, that's what I think should be addressed. And also, you said it's gonna be under a new management. We would like to know who new management is, so that's important to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just a moment. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments. I don't see anyone else wishing to speak, so yes, the floor is yours now.
Just to address a couple of quick issues. A, we have our own parking lot.
How many, how many par, how many cars?
That holds, I believe, 16 to 18 vehicles, okay? The Wolf's Den also has a very large parking lot, okay? Way outnumbered the amount of capacity probably in either place together. So parking, to me, is mute. Parking on the street is, and everywhere you go is first come, first served. They're gonna adhere to the hours, there's no need not to. But both establishments have plenty parking. So to me, that's mute. As far as any conflict, I would love to come over to Wolf's Den, matter of fact, I would go with you, to discuss anything. There's, you know, as far as management, you did say something about management, it was a manager, okay? That things got a little out of hand. I was the first one to say, this has gotta stop. And I was out of town when everything happened, which was very misfortune. No one wanted something like that to happen. We put the kibosh to it real quick, all right? And I worked with you, Marty. I met with Marty a couple times, you know, I met with Marty, I talked to Marty, give you all the respect when you contacted me. I contacted you right away. No one was hiding on this matter. Everyone wanted it to end, and that it did. So as far as parking goes, I mean, both establishments have parking lots. And so I don't foresee that to be an issue. And then there's Second North Street that can be parked on, along with Wolf Street. You know, I don't see that an issue. I mean, everyone has their own parking. As far as the new manager goes, it's gonna be same owner, okay? The manager, that things got out of hand. You know, we all, we all are in agreeance to it. And that ended. And that's over. You know, so, you know, there's not really much more I can say, but parking's a little baffling to be forward with it.
How many spaces again? I'm sorry.
16 to 18.
I believe there's 16, that's on the application. There's 16 spaces. There's also available open parking on Second North Street.
Yep.
Uh, Wolf Street, and on the Wolf's Den, whom Marty's referring to, has a massive parking lot. And it's huge. It's a very big parking lot. So, you know, I don't see there's any conflict there, in my opinion, of course.
So, yeah, just to clarify the parking situation, Wolf's Den does have its own parking, and Tommy's Diner does have its own parking as well in the rear, so...
Yep.
Just to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we can close public comment on this application. Move to our seeker review.
Can I have a question before we do the seeker review and discussion with my colleagues on the commission? I'm a little bit uncomfortable with moving forward on an application in which the applicant has not seen some of the material that we have that is very important, especially given the sensitive nature of this particular project and its relationship to the special use permit revocation that is before the Common Council right now. So my inclination would be to hold this over to the next meeting until those issues are resolved and the applicant can really see the environmental report on the crime issues, et cetera. But I respect the opinion of my colleagues if you feel differently, because I know we don't like to hold things unnecessarily, and we really don't want to. So I'm just suggesting that, otherwise we need to load this up with conditions so we make sure this kind of thing doesn't happen before. I wanna make sure those conditions are things that the owner has felt well aware of.
I would agree with that, I believe. I think that we committed here to doing a better job at getting those SEPTED reports to the applicant sooner, so that you're able to respond to our questions from the SEPTED report. It's difficult for you to answer our questions when you have just got it tonight. So that's on our part, and I think we're gonna work hard to make sure that those reports are available earlier for all of us to review. But I would agree. I think we could do seeker and then hold, or not do seeker, I don't care, and hold. It's up to you.
In agreement to it, not only the SEPTED recommendations, allowing the applicant more time to review and digest those and incorporate those into his project, but a couple of other concerns were raised this evening, you know, related to parking and so forth. So it gives an opportunity for all those things to maybe be discussed, perhaps some modifications to the application for our next meeting, which is actually a little more time than usual between meetings, given the holidays. So it's just over a month from now.
Yeah, this, because you're having this special meeting, that's actually just a month.
Forwards more time for that kind of review.
January 21st.
Yeah.
An agreement, yes. Thank you.
Yep. Question?
I'm not sure where this is going, I'm not sure if it's negative or positive right now, that, what I'm hearing, but I'm hearing a wait on a meeting. Would there be some form of temporary go, get open? You know, this has been happening. You know, this, getting, today, giving me this letter, okay? You know, you guys talked about it, this is your guys' fault, okay? I waited three to four weeks from codes to get ahold of me, okay? This is something that, you know, that's not fair, okay? We've adhered to every single thing that the police department wanted, everything, okay? We admitted some things got out of hand. We worked with everyone, okay? But right now, is everyone working with us? You know, just this year, you guys are admitting that there's a better process, but you know, you're gonna leave me closed? You know, the parking is, how's this parking? Like, we're all educated here, how is this a parking issue? Okay? I feel like I'm getting a little bit of, not a proper deal right now. We've done everything respectfully and came to codes, everything, and you can look into it. To drop this on me, and then say the next meeting's not until like January 20th or whatever, you're talking about another over a month of being closed. You know, we not happy right now. You know, we got attorneys already involved in this thing, and it's not worth the route we wanna go to just shun us away like that, because it's been happening since everything happened, is not fair.
I think your attorney would agree that we're helping you, shepherd you along this process very fairly.
Not in the very beginning, though.
So we've been working with you, and we continue, we will continue to work with you to address some of the SEPTED principles and the parking issues. So give me a call tomorrow and we'll talk about it, all right?
Please do, but you know, to make me wait another month, you know, I mean, I...
If I could say, speaking for myself, I mean, I appreciate what appears to be your sincerity in wanting to operate a new business there properly. I appreciate that. We wanna work with you to make that happen. I think it's important to understand, we don't have the final decision on this matter, we only make recommendations to the Common Council. And so in making a recommendation to the Common Council personally, I wanna make sure that we've done everything we can, so the Common Council then doesn't say, no, you can't have a special permit because of the previous history, if we haven't done everything to make sure that we've set this up so that there can be success. So that's why we're struggling to, because there's a lot of things that have been happening quickly here with the property, including the action before the Common Council right now with the revocation.
Yeah, and to tag onto that, we did give you a conditional approval on your certificate of use, so you can be, just as you stated, so your attorney should have told you that.
So, so he can go ahead, a temporary? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, conditional approval.
Okay. So, you know, it's...
Yeah.
So there's a temporary that I could work with you?
Yeah. And then in the meantime...
Call you tomorrow.
In the meantime, we'll work on some of the other issues, such as parking in the right-of-way and things of that nature, so we'll take a look at that.
Parking, I guess, you know, I'll come over and talk to the Wolf's Den guys, and you know, we could go there together. I've been welcoming codes department, everyone down, I've been inviting everyone down, you know?
So I'll turn it over back to the board.
Do you explain this? Is that where we're going? There's gonna be a conversation tomorrow.
Right, right, okay.
So he's gonna talk to staff, and he's gonna talk to his Common Counselor, and then we'll all be on the same page.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks to everyone who spoke on that application. We move to a major site plan review. Next.
The next item on the agenda is a major site plan review, MAS PR-24-23, on 101 to 239 North Salina Street. Owner is 101 North Salina Street LLC, and the applicant is Vincent Ryan. It's in the MX5 Zone District. And to preface this or tee it up, they had recently got a used variance. So turn it over.
Thank you, Christian. Good evening. Vincent Ryan, Keplinger Freeman Associates, landscape architect. I'm here with Chuck Wallace, representative of the owner, and Bob Gardner, the architect. Just to give you some background and some history on the project, VIP successfully completed Phase 1 of the project several years ago, working with the city for their new offices on the first floor. If you could zoom out just a tad. Block 1, which is the page left, big green square there, their office is on the first floor, and Chase Design is on the second floor. Moving across the page, Block 2 and Block 3 have yet to have tenants. They remain empty after the Post Standard left several, 2019, correct? End 2019. So Block 2, the center of the page, and Block 3, page right, had been vacant for five years. Moving forward, the applicant has submitted for a ZBA used variance to allow ground floor units on North Salina Street, which is planned south. 24 units there to add to the total count of 72 additional apartment units for the project. These will be residential units with a dedicated access on North Salina Street, which is that little yellow square you see next to that orange square on North Salina Street. In conversations with the zoning office, we went back and forth, in order to meet the requirements of security and meeting the requirements of the used variance, if we could go to the, either the planting plan or the renderings, I think would be great.
Sorry.
You can keep going, if the renderings are in there, you keep going down. Yeah.
Vince, can you explain what the updates are? Thank you.
Sure, yeah. You can go right, the planting plan's perfect right there. Thank you. So what I think Christian's passing out to you right now is an update I sent to him. It's a very minor update to the architecture. I could let Bob get into that more, but there is some changing to the glazing on Block 3 for the, for the windows. They are transparent glazing units.
We had some scripts explained.
And that's the face, the north face of Block 3. The infill that will occur here, from a site perspective, is between the building and the right-of-way line, is all the planting you see there. That's to provide security and buffer to the first floor residential units. If we go to the elevations, if you go back up, thank you. This gives it a better explanation now, looking at the elevations. And that's fine. You'll see that what is now, if you've gone up North Salina, we have that brick wall there that'll be removed and infill with these, the windows. The gray rectangles that you see are the existing... The gray rectangles that you see are the existing columns that are out there today, if you drive by, and then obviously infilling with glazing between those columns for the individual units. There'll be exterior lighting. The photometric plan was submitted with the application on those gray-green rectangles to provide sight lighting across that entire corridor, and then repetition of planting along that corridor as well, that you could see in the renderings that were submitted. From a site perspective, I think I'll stop there. If Bob just wants to provide a little bit more context to the building for your consideration.
Are the updated renderings?
Oh, yeah, this is perfect.
So we had met with the city, and one of the biggest concerns, to kind of energize the facade here. So in addition to taking out the brick, doing a combination of insulated metal panels storefront with some clear glass and spandrel glass, we ended up, for every 20-foot bay, on the corrugated metal strip, we've added some up-and-down lights. The photometrics kind of illustrate what's going on, but we wanted to, probably two-thirds down and one-third up, but the idea was just to illuminate the plantings and put some still over lights out onto the sidewalk. The photometrics that we ran did not include any of the street lighting in the calculation, and essentially out in this planting strip here, we're in about the, this edge out is about a foot handle, but we're between one foot handle and three foot handle here without any street lighting, and that's for the 220-foot strip. And then we've pretty much just augmented the existing lighting on the back part of the building, lights that were, the light, the handicap ramp and the entry, so we're going to remediate all that and kind of get all the working done. Area of downlight, uh, job under that.
He's just trying to clean up.
Yeah, we're, I mean, other than the replacement, taking out solid brick walls, this is, this is really, I think, the most monumental change, is taking out all this brick and replacing it with a combination of brick. And really reducing the amount of glass in the building.
And this was subject to the used variance as well, but just for your understanding, this is, if you could stick on this photo, that kind of bottom water table that you see, that granite piece there, going from south to north along the building, it's about where you see the, where the post is now, that big column, is about three feet. The residences will be about three feet above that finished floor, and then as you move across, it's actually almost seven feet where the finished floor is. So the residences are quite a ways up. Just to add to the, they're not on the ground necessarily.
Yeah, the gray base is not the floor level. I think it originally was, but then the floor is...
With that, I'll turn it over to you guys for questions.
Thank you. Questions? I have one. What's the number of units? I saw three different numbers in here, they can't all be right. How many?
Seventy-two.
Okay, okay. I saw 71, 78, and 72 is the real one. Okay.
And you'll be working with the neighborhood and business department for the eight affordable units out of that to determine the distribution of them throughout?
Yes. Additional questions?
Also, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. No additional speakers. So we'll close public comment on this, and we can turn to our seeker review.
Has everyone had a chance to review the short EAF Part 1 that's contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone reviewed the short EAF Part 2 also contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe this project will have any moderate to large impacts under Seeker?
No.
Because you do not believe that there will be any moderate to large impacts, I recommend you vote to issue a negative declaration under Seeker and complete the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
Move issuing a negative seeker declaration?
Second.
Thank you both. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? So the seeker resolution for the major site plan review is approved, and we may now proceed to the site plan review itself for action.
Move approval of MAS PR-24-37 as presented with 13 conditions listed on Pages 124 and 125 of the application packet.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion before, for the major site plan review. There's no discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? So the major site plan review is approved for MAS PR-24-37, and we move on to another major site plan review. Thank you all very much.
Are we ready for the next one?
We're ready. We are ready.
Okay. All right. Second to last item on the agenda, MAS, major site plan review, MAS PR-24-42 at 300 South, at 300 Birch Street and South State Street. Property owner is Syracuse Housing Authority. The applicant is Almost Over Tower LLC, is in the MX4 Zone District, and it's for a geothermal site plan review of a geothermal well.
Thank you, Christian. Good evening. My name's Andrew Van Ruij, project manager with Heschem-Garre Architects, and this is the renovations to Almost Over Towers. 12-story high-rise, affordable housing, population of seniors and associated amenities. The project is proposing site improvements, including a new egress drive for emergency vehicles, outdoor amenity space, the ground source heating-cooling system, and associated closed-loop system, also known as geothermal, and then various exterior improvements and interior improvements. As you probably already know, the project has received separate minor site plan approvals. So we're here today because both the outdoor amenities and the geothermal system has put us over the 10,000-square-foot soil disturbance threshold for the city. And that particular system is a fully electric, high-efficiency, ground-source system that will heat and cool the building and get the building off of the existing fossil-fuel boiler system. And that is a regulation of HCR, the state. When you're doing affordable housing, these buildings are required to be all-electric. So that's a big component of this project, and the reason the owner is pushing for this now is for several reasons. The geothermal system not only is highly efficient, but it allows the construction schedule to be compressed, as this will be an in-place rehab, so there will be tenants occupying this building while it's under construction. So it's for the safety and concern of the tenants that we compress the schedule. It also allows us to provide heating to the building while under construction. Additionally, when the new transformers show up, we can simply switch the system over from the existing boilers to the geothermal system with very little downtime.
So the geothermal system is sufficient to support the entire building in terms of its cooling and heating needs, correct?
That's correct, and that's based on the number of wells that we provide.
And how many wells are there?
It was approximately proposed between 100 and 120. The engineers have designed it that way to ensure that, worst-case scenario, all the wells will fit on-site. We are currently engaging the subcontractors in a, in a bridge design build, so that we can fine-tune those number of wells.
What's the, what's the estimated timeframe for construction of the wells?
That's a good question. This project is phased, so this diagram here is showing the wells and the loops, and the, each loop field will be constructed under parking, a parking lot, existing parking lot. So each parking lot is its own phase, there's three parking lots, three phases. Thirty days for drilling, 30 days for paving per phase.
You said you're able to maintain residents in the, in the building throughout this project, and are you at capacity now with residents?
No, so this, this project has been in the works for several years, so both the owner and the building manager have been planning for this phased approach. So right now, the building is approximately two-thirds filled, in anticipation that we're going to be shutting down the building by wing, and there's three wings. Yep.
And then, when all is done, you expect a lot of residents interested in the renovated and newly heated and newly cooled facility, right?
It's the puzzle game, yep. But the, both the owner and the management have been doing a really good job of documenting who came from which unit, and with the best intention to bring those people back to their newly renovated unit that they came from.
Great. Don't need to overtake all the questions here, so please.
No, it's fine.
Quite a project.
Yeah.
Exciting, exciting project, really.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Well, for the entire community as well.
Yeah, huge.
Other question?
A question just about the comments of the fire prevention zoning review. There's considerable questions about, you know, access to the property during construction, et cetera. I'm not sure, are you aware of all those comments on Page 202 of the packet?
Yeah.
Some of them seem fairly serious, but they seem to be all things that, if you've considered them.
Yeah, actually, so there's a GC onboard, and they've been onboard for months now, and they've, we've worked with them pretty much daily in working through this phased approach, and there's been a lot of concerns, just being in occupied rehab, you know, surrounding how people are going to use this building during construction, how you secure the building during construction, egress, temporary partitions, yada, yada, yada. So the GC is actively working with the fire department for, in general, the plan, the safety plan for this building, regarding the vehicle circulation in particular. I would have to go back to them and see what they've discussed and what they planned with the fire department. Yep.
Just wanted to call your attention to that.
Yep, understood.
Someone serious.
Yeah, it's huge.
Is there any way to mitigate the noise during the drilling phase, and given that the building's going to be occupied?
That's a good question. I think we're, we're limited to the technology that's available to us, you know, as besides, you know, drilling during potential hours of the day that maybe people are at work or the building is less occupied would be probably our best bet.
And of course, there'd be notification of the residents, so they know what to expect. Luckily, it's time-limited, so...
Yeah.
Further questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come forward. We do not have any additional speakers, so we'll close public comment on this, and we can turn our attention to our seeker review.
Has everyone had a chance to review the FEAF Part 1?
Yes.
And has every, has everyone reviewed the FEAF Part 2?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone believe this project will have any moderate to large impacts under Seeker?
No.
Because you do not believe there will be any moderate to large impacts, I recommend you vote to issue a negative declaration under Seeker and complete the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion on seeker to that effect?
Move to issue a negative seeker declaration? Second.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker resolution is approved, and we can now consider action on the major site plan review. Is there a motion for action on this?
Move to approve major site plan-24-42 and beyond the general conditions for major site plans. There are three conditions that should be attached, which are listed on Page 187 of the packet, I'm sorry, 170, Page 170 of the packet.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion now before us. If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Site plan review for MAS PR-24-42 is approved. Thank you. We have an additional site plan review.
Yes, the last project is...
Last but not least.
Last but not least. The SurgeLink expansion is a major site plan review, MAS PR-24-41, and is at several locations, notated on Page 203 of your packet, and the city of Syracuse, the owner and applicant of this project, Jen Tifft, is here to present the project.
Thank you, Christian. Good evening, everyone. A little partial, but I think we save the best for last. So this application might be a little bit of a deviation from what you normally would be reviewing, which is, you know, a singular site or a campus. As Christian was saying, this is a project to install broadband infrastructure throughout the city of Syracuse to support the city's community broadband program and our municipal broadband service called SurgeLink. Just for a little context and to make sure everyone's well aware, the city decided during the pandemic, when there was a lot of rightful attention on the digital divide, to take a bold leap in creating a municipal broadband program, where the city would invest directly in broadband infrastructure and provide internet service to people who otherwise can't afford it or are maybe limited, because for most of the city, most of us have a single broadband provider still today. And so the city is essentially becoming a competitor in that market, and we were very fortunate, we applied for a grant through New York State to expand that service. We've been operating our service with a fixed wireless network on the south side of Syracuse as a pilot. We applied for and received an $11 million grant from the state of New York to expand that service on the north side and into the valley, and so that's actually what this site plan review is for. The broadband network is essentially a fixed wireless network, meaning that everyone's internet signal in their home is primarily transmitted wirelessly. However, the state grant is funding the installation of fiber... However, the state grant is funding the installation of fiber backhaul. So we are actually installing, as a part of this project, 20 miles of fiber that will obviously run through downtown to the north and to the south to cover the north side and the valley neighborhoods. And so that's actually what you see in the drawings. Certainly through the core downtown area, that fiber will be installed underground as you get out to the northern neighborhoods and the southern neighborhoods, that fiber will be installed arially. The design is to obviously use existing conduit for underground and existing poles for above-ground installation. So we believe there's relatively minimal impact from an environmental perspective. And then, of course, the wireless transmissions are done through what we call points of presence, which are primarily through installations on select rooftops, many of which are on city-owned buildings or city-operated buildings. There is, I believe in your packet, two proposed plans where we would install a self-supporting tower, which is actually in an industrial district on the north side at a bus garage operated by the city school district, and then a monopole in the Skunk City area on Gettys Street, which would be constructed at an existing city park. And those are the only two new structures that would be created as a part of this project, both of which, the, the bases of which are well within the seeker guidelines for, for impact. As a result of this project, we'll be serving 5,000 more residents with affordable broadband and hoping to then use this network to further expand to other parts of the city that we're not serving. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And I also want to thank our contractor partners, who are actually going to be doing the work to install the network and, and manage that network for, for coming tonight and staying through, through the end here. And if you have technical questions about how the network actually works, of which I am no expert, they will gladly answer those questions for you.
35,000 people eventually being served through this?
Correct.
It's a big percentage of our city residents.
Correct.
Questions for the applicant?
Two questions. First, most importantly, I live at 1011 Westcott Street. How soon can I get $35 a month of internet service?
Great question. We're going to try to complete this expansion and then
Do another expansion.
Expansion, we're
Expansion number two.
We're biting off a lot at the moment, but we're, we're excited to do it. The good news with wireless, fixed wireless networks, right, is, is that, you know, you can obviously install those networks relatively expeditiously and a lot more cost-effectively than fiber-to-home networks. And so the, the good news for you, Barry, is that we might be able to serve Westcott through just the additional, like, single point of presence, maybe, once we get all of the fiber backhaul in place.
On a more serious note, the monopole site, the county had a recommendation that consider placing the
Yeah, closer to the right of way.
Yeah, because I, I mean, it, it's sort of in the center.
Correct.
It does look like there is room to move it back and
Yeah, we are actually actively, you know, reevaluating that, and we're open to working with our parks team and our engineering team, obviously, to, to find a better location. I believe the, the site was selected purely because that is the highest elevation on, on the park. And of course, the higher elevation, the better for wireless signal distribution. So it would probably produce a better, stronger signal to have it at the highest-most point. But we're doing some analysis right now to understand what we, you know, potentially lose in, in moving it. But to your point, it's, it's not necessarily out of the question to maybe move it on that site. We're also still looking at potentially some other locations in that neighborhood. This one really is quite ideal because of the elevations and, you know, relative limited tree cover. We're also talking with the water department about potentially using the reservoir, which has some other limitations. So we're definitely open to exploring an alternative for this site. But right now, this site is the most ideal. We do have a, a bit of a service gap in, in the Skunk City area right now.
So Jen, in addition to the county's comments on location, is there anticipated, I didn't see it in there, but maybe you're doing it anyway, some sort of protection of the pole?
Oh, of course.
As well as the kids who will be using the park?
Right.
So that screened access is
Correct. Yeah. No, the, the pole would, would generally not be just, you know, kind of out, out in the open. There would be certainly a fence of some sort. We'll obviously finalize plans for the height and, and all of that. But yeah, we, we would want to obviously restrict access directly to the, to the pole itself. So that, that would certainly be taken into consideration.
Just to be consistent with the record, each time we talk to any private enterprise that wanted to do anything with radioheads and towers, you know, your fiber optic cable's protected in some ways, and that's different. But as we're saying, anything that can become an attractive nuisance or, or a challenge for someone to scale, we, we appreciate any protection you can give it.
Yeah.
And of course, for all the structures, just to make them look as natural as possible, to get them to fit in with the
Right.
building that they're being attached to, same request we'll make of the city that we make of every other private venture. But it's certainly great.
Just don't turn it into a frankenpine.
We'll do our best.
If it's tastefully done, Barry and I will disagree on that. And, you know, if it's a transformer as opposed to a frankenpine. Optimus Prime is fine.
No, no comment.
Further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the applicant? Oh, oh, sorry.
One in favor.
Please.
Giovanni Hines, sorry. Resident in Syracuse now for about two decades. High school, middle school here, so I've been a resident for quite some time. I am a part of the SurgeLink program as one of the lead installers. And I'm coming here speaking not only as a technician, but also a resident, right? This program is beautiful. It's a wonderful program in terms of what, what, what we're doing, right? Providing a low-cost internet to, to families who can't afford that, the, the other services, right? So with that being said, you know, in this day and age, access to broadband is absolutely necessary in terms of communication, information, and also education, right? So with that being said, if we're able to provide this to more residents, it's a very beautiful thing, and I'm happy to be a part of it. All right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application, please come forward? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, please come to the podium. I don't think we have any additional speakers on this application, so we'll close public comment and turn to our seeker review for this.
Has everybody had a chance to review the FEAF Part One contained in your packet?
Yes.
Is everyone familiar with the questions of the FEAF Part Two also contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe this project will have any moderate to large impacts under seeker?
No.
Because you do not believe there will be any moderate to large impacts, I recommend you vote to issue a negative declaration under seeker and complete the FEAF Part Three accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
Move issuing a negative seeker declaration?
Second.
Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Seeker resolution passes, and we may now turn to action on the site plan review for MAS
Chairman, there is no action on the site plan. It is, in essence, a concept plan or what's referred to in zoning ordinance as sketch plan. There will be, for all the private properties listed and city-owned, there will be individual applications and all the right-of-way work.
As they progress through their
Exactly.
list, okay. So we are done for tonight with this.
That's it.
We're ending the year on a nice, high note with a nice project.
So Christian, given that qualification, should we change the language to sketch plan, sketch plan in the notes, et cetera? Because I know we're still trying to work through that whole language process. So this really is considered a sketch plan?
Yeah. For the meantime, yeah, we can refer to it as sketch plan.
We may see something sometime in 2025, maybe early in 2025. Okay, great. Good luck with the project. Do we have any other items we need to deal with for today, for this year?
Mayor, do you have anything?
Not for part of the meeting, but immediately after.
Then is there a motion to adjourn? Good night.
Second?
Second discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? We are adjourned.
It's hard to separate now.